I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance this evening. I'm sorry that we're getting started about a half hour late. There was a great art presentation out in the comments area. Please join me in pledge of allegiance to our flag. We'll move into audience comments and I was asked earlier by a person that they thought their comments may go a little over two minutes. So we're going to be pretty flexible on that and give everybody equal opportunity, but let's try to keep it at two and a half minutes. And so with that, who's our first speaker?
Our first speaker is Anne Salyers.
Is there a clock to watch?
Yeah.
Okay. Need some tech support.
We can do it the old fashioned way if we have to.
Need the timer if that's what we're waiting for. Okay, okay. All right. Hello. My name is Erin. I'm a graduate of Carroll. I have kids in two different NAC schools right now. First, I want to say thank you for making these meetings accessible online. For those that cannot attend in person, I know there are plenty others who wanted to come but couldn't. I'm here in person tonight for two reasons. One, I brought a student. It's the last week of school and I brought a student who's going to share her experience of Carroll High School this year. And just a minute after me. The other reason though is because of something that was said at the last meeting. There was this really great presentation, Lizette, about the cultural diversity of NACs. Sorry, I was just saying that because of her phone. So the cultural diversity presentation last week by Mrs. Kay was awesome. Honestly, the lack of diversity in the school system is really the only reason why I was hesitant to move back here and send my school or send my kids to NACs. So it's really great to see that NACs is growing in this area. Sixty-four different languages is really impressive. But it's not even five minutes after that presentation, a board member made a comment about interracial marriage being an inappropriate topic for math textbook. So hopefully the board member does not actually think that interracial marriage is inappropriate and was just misspoke, hopefully. If he does actually believe this, he needs to read the NACs anti-harassment statement and resign from our school board because that does not represent us here at NACs. Okay. If he believes that using actual US Census data to learn math is inappropriate, I encourage him to read the Indiana academic standards where process standard number four states mathematically proficient students apply the mathematics they know to solve problems arising in everyday life, society, and the workplace using a variety of appropriate strategies. And then a direct quote from census.gov, "The data collected by the census is used to distribute hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funds to local communities. The census tells us who we are and where we're going as a nation and helps our communities determine where to build everything from schools to supermarkets and homes to hospitals." So what an excellent way to connect math to the real world. Whether the intention of the statement was exactly how it sounded or not, it did cause some harm and I believe a public apology is due. All of our students and families, I'm sorry, what? I'm not at two minutes yet. Can I keep going or not? One more thing. I also just wanted to thank the teachers union for the statement that they released. It's sad that it was even necessary, but I believe most NACs parents were happy to see it published. Despite some of the issues NACs has faced the last couple of years, we're still overall a great school system with hardworking faculty and staff that really deserve our trust and support. Thank you.
That was good.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monica and I'm an extensive student from Spain. Carroll High School introduced me to American education system, American culture, and to America values. And to be honest, I don't think my experience could have been any better. America can be probably the most culturally diverse country in the world, and Carroll was not the exception. Teacher welcomed me, avid to discover, while it could be having someone from a different country in your class. Making the effort to understand my spelling and grammar mistakes and necessary discussions because, you know, second language breaks. The friends I made here made me start liking the Spanish accent I just didn't care about because according to them, it's super cute. The multicultural club I participated in, when I got to make a presentation about my country and my classmates were eagerly learning of it. They all showed me how much this Carol appreciates diversity. As an extensive student, I feel so grateful being able to be part of this cultural diversity that makes Carroll so special. I was always excited to start this funny school tour and that part of while learning about the American one because I was felt diversity was embraced in this school. And that's why at Carroll, I had the chance to show, to know so many different people, so many different people. Different origin, different ethnicities, different races within the same couple, et cetera. As someone important of that diversity, I think that's what make Carroll to be Carroll. How encouraging is it to have so many cultures, to respect them and to learn from them? According to my personal experience, diversity at Carroll is welcome and even embraced. Making make change, a dream that became reality. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Tammy Collier again. I have a sophomore and an eighth grader here in the NAC system and my oldest graduated in 2018. I'm here to address the comments made at the last meeting about the precalculus book. To be honest with you, the comments disappointed me. Did you know that it'll be fifty-five years in June that interracial marriage was approved in the Loving versus Virginia case? Fifty-five years, long time. And also I wanted to remind everybody that the divorce stigma no longer stands. It's no longer needed. I want to know if we're going forwards or backwards in 2022. I would like to be going forwards. Also, does everyone realize that interracial couples and families and divorced households represent NACs? They're in this corporation. Why do you think story problems in a precalculus book would be inappropriate for sophomores through seniors? Those are the kids that are going to see that. If you have students enrolled in NACs, they're more likely going to mix with students from interracial families or divorced households. Kids talk. They're going to know about all of this. They already know about all of this. So how are you saving students with story problems when they mix with these kids already? Also to know about me, I'm divorced. I'm divorced twice. I have two college degrees. So I represent that divorced household and corporation. Also, I value my friendships with my interracial couples and families. They are here. My kids mixed with them at swim club and they're great people. They're great individuals, they're great parents, and they're professionals in their work fields. They matter. So I support going forwards and not backwards with the textbooks and I support the math features, the right textbook for the kids. Thanks.
Recently, I looked at the current precalculus textbook being used at our high school and I found that it was adopted back in 2016. So I looked back at some board meeting minutes in May of 2016 and noted that the fifth edition of the Blitzer precalculus textbook was unanimously approved at that time by our board. It was the book recommended by the teachers at that time. And the seventh edition of that very same book is being recommended right now by our teachers for adoption. I took the time to email the board a link to the fifth edition of this book that's being used now. So you can see that it is literally exactly the same book that we're asking to have adopted and that the teachers have recommended. All it does is simply an update to the current textbook. So I hope that you had time to review that. In 2016, three of our current board members were on that board, our current president, our current vice president, and our immediate past vice president were all on the board at that time. Remember that the adoption of the book was unanimous. The book was not tabled for further review and there was no mention of needing to look for inferences or inappropriate content at that time. So I asked myself, what has changed? And I can tell you, I believe it's nothing more than the current political climate. So I asked the board to do the right thing, listen to the recommendations of those who educate our children. And please leave politics off of our nonpartisan school board.
I'm Tiffany Smith. In less than two weeks, my son will graduate from Carroll High School. He received hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarship offers from the universities he applied to and narrowly missed a perfect score on the math portion of the SATs. Students do not receive a near-perfect math score on the SATs and colleges do not offer scholarships to students if their education is lacking. Obviously, his was not. My son worked very hard for his academic achievements, but they are not his achievements alone. He received an exceptional education from extraordinary educators. This is not a brag about my son, rather a thank you for the education and the experiences my son received as a NAC student. This is a thank you to the district that educated my son so well. A thank you to the board members, I'm sorry, a thank you to the members of the school board who supported the administrators and teachers who were responsible for my son's education. This is a thank you to all of the Mrs. Abels, the Mr. Listenskis, the Mrs. Rustlings, the Mrs. Steggenjess, the Mr. Norris, the Mr. Walkers, and the Mrs. Lenkenau's. This most especially is a thank you to all of the Mrs. Leones, the Mrs. Clarks, and the Mrs. Hanises for really seeing my son and encouraging him. This is a thank you to all of the Mrs. Lemmings and the Mrs. Straisleys for expanding my son's empathy and patience while serving their classroom as a peer tutor. This is a thank you to the Coach Bs and the Coach Courtneys for my son's unified champions together experiences. This is a thank you to the Coach Bookers, the Coach Millers, the Coach Brooks's, the Coach Frankies, and especially the Coach Rawleys. Raleigh stuck at me. This is a little off script. Coach Raleigh, he taught his players that the most important thing they can do is to be a good person of high moral character. You don't get that everywhere you go. So NACs is recognized as one of the best school districts in the state thanks to the kinds of experiences and education my son and many others have received from dedicated administrators, teachers, and coaches. Our teachers know how to do their jobs and do them well. They know what tools they need to best educate our children. My son went through the higher education math classes offered at CHS and used the fifth edition of the math book in question. My son's academic success, especially in math, reflects his hard work, but it's also a direct result of the exemplary math education he received at NACs. Please listen to the recommendations of our teachers and support our students by allowing the teachers to have the very best tools they need to continue to provide an outstanding education for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Newmark. So I'm going to start by reading a statement on behalf of a math teacher, Mrs. Barron. She couldn't be here tonight. And just a really brief statement from her. She said, "The precalculus Blitzer textbook matches the Indiana state standards for precalculus algebra and precalculus trigonometry. This textbook also satisfies the math process standards, especially for number four, model with mathematics, which requires students' needs to use everyday situations. This textbook also gives enough prob- This textbook also gives enough problems to reach three different levels of pre-calculus with rigor. Students are able to actually read the examples so that they can have additional resources when completing homework at home." And that's the end of her statement. And I just wanted to add my own statement. Bob Blitzer, the author of this textbook, has a bachelor of arts degree with dual majors in mathematics and psychology and a minor in English literature. He also has a master of arts degree in mathematics and a doctorate in behavioral sciences. He's taught math at a college level for more than 30 years. He's written textbooks that cover high school algebra, college algebra, trigonometry, and pre-calculus. Two things that really stand out in Blitzer's comments at the beginning of the textbook to me are, number one, who says that pre-calculus textbooks can't be entertaining? From the quirky cover to the photos in the chapter and section openers, prepare to expect the unexpected. I hope some of the book's enrichment essays, called Blitzer bonuses, will put a smile on your face from time to time. And number two, I designed the book's features to help you acquire knowledge of algebra and trigonometry, as well as show you how algebra and trigonometry can solve authentic problems that apply to your daily life. He goes on to say, "Enjoy the pages that follow as you empower yourself with the algebra and trigonometry needed to succeed in life, your career, and your daily life." In conclusion, I think we need to trust the teachers that picked this specific book for our students. If they say that this book meets the Indiana standards the best, and so I believe this is what we need to do for our students, we need to trust that they are the experts in this subject matter. And not all math problems are designed, not all math problems are assigned out of the textbook. The story problems are not asking students to discuss their opinions on the topics, but simply to extract information from these problems. We want our students to have the best math book available. I would hate for our students to be cheated out of having the best possible tools they need for their success by playing it safe and voiding a possible fake controversy. This is not political. Please show the teachers that you respect them by approving the textbook that the teachers want. Thank you.
So I came in, and like any good audience, my information's gonna change. So, Cortezano Smith, you could assume that I would have had an interracial marriage. And with that assumption, my children actually went to school in Mexico, and I can tell you that in Mexico, they don't take math and political agendas and combine them. They teach math. With that being said, credentialism, all the letters behind somebody's name, is irrelevant when we're trying to get kids that have character, integrity, and come out of a school system and be productive adults. I can tell you, being an executive in a credit union, we don't use the algebra and trigonometry when we're balancing our checkbooks and when we're going through our bank statements, which is not even being taught correctly and appropriate for students to come out of the school system and live a sound, financially free life. With that being said, the reason why we're questioning books that we weren't questioning five years ago, 10 years ago, is because there's been a lack of trust between parents and their perception on what the board has done in the last couple of years. So when you have a lack of trust, it demands inspection and research as to what you've been doing in the past, so we can build a bridge to retain that trust that we lost with you, if that makes sense. So the reason why you're being asked for things you weren't asked for before is because you had people that trusted you who no longer trust you. That's not an us problem. That's something for you to get back. With that being said, leadership accepts all fault and gives away all credit and gives all the way, away all the accolades. So what happened with Journal Gazette? That's a Journal Gazette problem, but the leadership here needs to stand by the people that are on their team, because this is the team. Journal Gazette is not part of this team. You guys are with our students and with us as parents, and if you're not standing for each other like you stood for your predecessor in the position here before us, then why would you treat one person differently than the person who just left the school system? If you want to look up the definition of discrimination, that's it. Thank you.
I'm Fred Gilbert, 12513 Hildebrand Road, taxpayer and resident of the district. I worked almost 40 years as a refugee caseworker welcoming people from 29 different countries. And presenter at the last presentation remarked when I introduced myself that she's, my face glowed a lot during her presentation. Again, it was the joy to welcome people, and the fact that school systems have been the key to the assimilation of not only students, but also their parents. And I always encourage everybody to get ready for the junior high prom, because that is a bridge. Now, regarding the pre-calculus decision that was made last week, I recommend that you reverse it and accept that book. I've reviewed the book, and the issues that you've mentioned are absurd. The legislature basically repudiated most of the objections that are the type that was used for that book. The entire legislature rejected most of those. It allows us to understand the racial background inherent in the analysis of the bell curve of information by Murray, and also other problems related to statistic misrepresentation. I'm a master's level counselor. I used information and statistics to determine differences among students in Turkey. You need to counter these, the only way you can counter the misrepresentations of statistics is to understand math and accept story problems, because what we live in this time is stories. Social work is a story. And if you're not uncomfortable in class, then you're probably not learning. And if a subject is found in a math book that makes you uncomfortable, maybe you need to examine your, thank you.
Played basketball, so I'm very proud of her. Anyways, hello, I'm Steve. I would like to address the issue of the textbook adoption. Northwest Allen has grade level and department level curriculum alignment teams, CAT teams, made up of dozens of teachers on each team, as well as subcommittees of teachers. These groups spend part of the year reviewing a variety of publishers, textbooks, the materials, and tech technology software. There are opportunities for the choices by the CAT teams to be reviewed by the public and by the board. This year, this process was completed on time and in proper fashion. We hope that the board will approve the proposed materials for Carroll High School pre-calculus. Our students deserve the best textbooks and resources for learning that are available. Our students don't want to be part of a political or cultural battle over this textbook or any other textbook in other subjects or grades in the future that are based on wild conspiracies or theories or such. Our students are much better than that, as many thousands of Northwest Allen students come from families that have taught them respect, recognition of individual dignity, acceptance of equality, and tolerance for people who look or speak differently than themselves. So let's not look for ways to divide people. That is, it is a distraction from our real challenges. Also, I want to congratulate the board for selecting a candidate for superintendent, Mr. Wayne Barker. This is a wonderful selection, a homerun or a slam dunk, as I like to say, by Northwest Allen County School Board members. And I also, lastly, want to thank Dr. Shaminoff for the wonderful service she has provided for the children of Northwest Allen County Schools. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Angela. I have five kids, one that has graduated from Carroll, and four that are still in the system. And I am eternally grateful to our NAC educators who have helped me get all of our kids through school, because it has been a challenge, and we would not be making it now if it weren't for all of the great educators here. That being said, I also want to thank all of our educators in NACs that worked so hard to bring pertinent content to our students so they can become informed, intelligent members of society. This is piggybacking a little bit on what Mr. Driver said, but the process of choosing exactly what our students study. As a matter of fact, the entire process that we asked about was a successful superintendent. That process is very thorough and has continuously resulted in such positive outcomes we still use today. The process starts well before the school board sees or approves the material. It involves all the educators who will be teaching materials, and also involves parents to freely view the proposed materials. All input is taken into consideration before the board is even asked to approve. So I must ask the board, do you trust our professional educators and the parents of NACs, and do you still agree with the process? As a parent, I felt after the last meeting that you were losing faith in your own professional staff and your own system.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit hoarse. Apologize for that. I, as you know, I'm a parent here in America, and I'm just bringing this right now to the I am here to talk about the textbook controversy, and in a math book, because it contains supposedly inappropriate data sets about interracial marriage or divorce rates, or whatever else, is not a good look for the school cooperation. It would be very damaging to the reputation of the district and its welcoming reputation, its academic reputation, its welcoming reputation. What I believe is inappropriate, though, for this whole process is for the board to be conducting individual reviews of textbooks. Textbook in question here, apparently from the letter that was sent, was reviewed and vetted by a group of math teachers and parents. Why does the board think it's either wise or advisable to start micromanaging this process and inserting itself as a form of big government into these decisions? While the board does have overarching authority under the bylaws for the management and control of facilities and programs, does anyone really think it's a wise use of the board's time to be doing a review of all the textbooks in the NAC system? There's 11 schools in the district. I took the opportunity online to look at the course offerings just for Carroll High School, and I counted over 200 classes being offered. That would be over 200 textbooks, presumably, at least that much. It'd be hundreds of textbooks if you reviewed all 11 school districts' textbooks. So please, I ask that you stop micromanaging and trust the professionals and parents that were involved in this process. Please embrace the leadership skill that's called delegation to your professionals, to people that are subject matter experts, and please protect the reputation of this school district and don't accept the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to say that I'm very happy that Mr. Barker has been proposed as the new superintendent of NACs. I haven't personally had the opportunity to meet him, but I have heard all the things about him from people who have, and there's a lot of us who are looking forward to hopefully welcoming him to the community. That said, I'd like to focus on a different position in the district. A school board member is not an easy position, and these past couple of years have really put that truth in the spotlight. Difficult though it may be, board members perform a vital duty in our school district. They are the elected representatives of the parents. We rely on them to be our voices. I've had the opportunity over the past few months to get to know and speak personally with two of our board members. I'm incredibly thankful that we have representatives who are willing to take the time to hear from individual parents about what they want from their children's schools. Kent, you have made yourself available to speak at length about issues that concern us. Ron, your door has always been open to hash out whatever is on our minds. You're doing exactly what you were asked to do, to take the concerns of your constituents seriously and work to represent us.
Thank you.
At the last school board meeting, our members dared to do what was asked of them and review the curriculum for the upcoming school year. Upon review, it was found that a proposed textbook contained material that was rather politicized for the subject. Topics of climate change, political affiliation, marijuana use, non-binary gender options, and yes, race seemed out of place in a calculus book. And it was unanimously decided that further investigation was warranted before a vote was conducted. I think that's a perfectly appropriate decision. As a parent raising children in an increasingly divided world, I want their schools to be a refuge from division. I want them to learn math, not to be bombarded by political topics that divide society. After meeting with our board members, I can say with certainty that they are not racist. They are not against interracial marriage. I believe they are conscious of what is being presented to the kids in our community, though. They don't want math problems that lead students to false equivalencies about such topics. They don't want homework questions that lead to hurtfulness, resentment, or division. They don't want textbooks that insert political ideology into curriculum. I am greatly disappointed to see that our news media had an entirely different take on the situation, though. I'm not sure why the Journal Gazette is so deeply invested in math textbooks at NACs that they felt the need to billify a board member who suggested they wanted a second look, or why they cut other slanderous opinions from people who neither live in the district nor have school-aged children. Why did they immediately label a board member a racist without any evidence to that claim? What was their goal? I suppose that I can't answer that question, but I can encourage our members who stand up for the kids and families who have chosen to be at NACs. I think you can. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I want to address, first of all, the issue of the false information that was given to the Journal Gazette about Kent Summers. He is not a racist, and to say so is an outright lie, and the defamation of character that was printed about him is just appalling. And Northwest Allen County Schools should not stand by without a statement in defense for him. I am the mother-in-law of two wonderful men of color, therefore, my daughters are in an interracial marriage. I have beautiful mixed grandbabies that I couldn't love any more than I do my all-white, and if that sounds racist, you know, we live in a society of race, white, black, yellow, whatever. So, but my daughters are upset because they're such a big to-do about the book, the math book. They're wanting you to stand firm with your decision. They're offended because they feel that it's one step closer to CRT curriculum, which they both said at different times to me, what are we supposed to do? Tell my children that their black heritage is all bad and all wrong, or am I supposed to tell them that we're all right and wrong? So this political stuff has got to stop. We're not Chicago. We're not that big of an area. And I still believe that Northwest Allen County area is more conservative-minded than they are liberal-minded. And I got a lot more to say, but I do want to, I don't have enough time. I want to thank, and I know we're not sorry to mention names, but I'm gonna anyway, I want to thank Kent Summers and the rest of the board to decide that they did not approve the math book. And I want to thank Steve Marcus for speaking out last meeting about, yes, cell phones are dangerous, but also pointing out that Northwest Allen County School Board does not hand them out and approve their use. So with that said, I think that hopefully we can move forward with the new superintendent. So with that said, I think that hopefully we can move forward with the new superintendent and thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
Stella Brewer. Hi, my name is Stella Brewer-Bartanian. I'm a junior at Carroll High School. At the last board meeting, a pre-calculus textbook recommended for use in next year's curriculum was judged as containing inappropriate content, not in any objective mathematical sense, but rather because of subjective evaluation regarding the specifics of a few story problems. It's curious that mere mentions of interracial marriage and divorce rates would constitute grounds for disqualifying a textbook, specifically a math textbook? Provided that the data are accurate and factual and the content isn't demeaning or violent, then why does it really matter what the scenarios are about? These scenarios reflect the real world we live in, and they don't feature provocative or questionable content unless we're going to question reality. They are not describing or advocating for discrimination or ignorance. The board members asserted that the topics he found problematic were not a part of mathematics, but everything is a part of mathematics and that, to the extent, the math helps us understand the world we live in. The assertion that this textbook is pushing an agenda through mere mention of interracial marriage and divorce rates has not been supported with any reasonable evidence other than the opinion of one individual. If the data is valid, then isn't trying to remove the entire book a bit cagey? Hiding information is just as much pushing an agenda as providing distorted information is. Use of real-world examples would seem to be a positive feature of a textbook and that it helps to facilitate students' understanding of complex mathematical concepts and how to translate them to the real world. If this textbook was recommended by our NACS teachers as an appropriate tool for student reading, then who are we as non-mathematicians and non-educators to claim that we know better than our teachers? And seemingly try to undermine their professional advice? The quality and integrity of student education at NACS relies on good faith and trust in our teachers. I'd like to ask the board to reconsider this book if, in fact, it's the one our teachers want. At least ask them for their response to these claims made regarding an agenda. They know best how to educate their students. Please let them do their job.
Thank you.
Lisa BoVay Summers.
I'm Lisa BoVay Summers. You know, one of the things that I find interesting that we've heard a lot about tonight, just to mention briefly about the textbook. It's so ridiculous, is that, you know, some people have talked about letting the people do their job. And it is the job of the school board to review things and to review the curriculum and to, you know, bring up an issue if you have a concern and stuff about, look what happens when you do. You're crying out loud. You're not allowed to disagree with anybody. And if you say one word, you know, I found it interesting because, of course, we went back and listened to the board meeting last week and we're like, what did you say? You know, well, he didn't say, I disagree with interracial. He just basically said the word, trying to include a list of topics that, you'll notice, some of you who think that the previous textbook was great, I mean, maybe we should just stick to that and use the previous textbook. It doesn't have any of these changes. And I mean, math hasn't changed, right? But there's an index at the beginning that says, what are the changes in this book? And it just, you know, and Kent was probably just trying to clarify or just recall what that list was off the top of his head and just named off a few things. You know, and that's just the first word that it said, interracial marriage, you know, divorce rates, prejudice by age. I mean, did you guys know that you're the most prejudiced? If you're over age 65, you're the most prejudiced, just so everybody knows, you're the most prejudiced. I mean, there are things in that book that just should be looked at a second time. But as soon as you say that, you know, people become irate. I mean, that's what started this whole thing, right? It started, all this argument started because you guys actually asked a question and said, maybe we could talk about masks. Holy smokes, look what has happened. Our entire school district has become divided just because you asked. A fundamental question that we ask in science and in medicine all the time, weigh the risk and the benefit. And look what has happened. You're supposed to ask questions. Please keep asking them. Have courage. You're doing the right thing.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We've got two sets from the May 9th, the executive session and regular board meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Mrs. Slaughter, second by Mrs. Hathaway. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye. Any oppose? The minutes are approved. We'll move into personnel with Dr. Yeager.
Thank you, Mr. Boger. Under personnel, recommend approval of A through I. There are a large number of recommendations in personnel. A lot of this is summer school and certified as well as classified. When we get to extended school year, their special needs program, it's a standard every year, extended school year program that is recommended and accepted by the board. Certified recommendations are all summer school. So we see several pages of recommendations. Then we go into classified recommendations. Those are summer school classified recommendations. That's item F. And G is homebound instruction, H extracurricular resignations, and extracurricular recommendations in letter I, recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mrs. Hathaway. Do we have a second? Motion by Mr., second by Mr. Summers. Any discussion?
As we jumped before, we do all the positions we think we're going to need. But obviously, if there's class smaller, we don't have all the teachers or we get more if we have more kids in certain areas.
We'll adjust.
Yes, we'll adjust accordingly. We don't know all the numbers exactly yet. Correct?
Correct.
I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Becker and Mrs. Kinder on their retirements and wish them the very best in this next season of life and thank them for their service to our NACS family. And also looking over all the recommendations, I believe we have over 150 employees willing to help us out in the summertime. And I think that is phenomenal. I just want to thank them for their willingness to serve our students.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd make one more in addition. This just shows how comprehensive our summer school program is. It's really an outstanding opportunity for all of our students, K through 12.
Any other comments? Being none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carried. Communications with Dr. Yeager.
We have field trips in front of you. One extra one that came in late, it's the state FFA convention and awards, June 16th through 13th. 12 students, three adults. We'd recommend that we go ahead and add those to the other two field trips. It's one of those issues that the awards are announced and then we're in between board meetings. So we have to add this one to this board meeting. So please recommend approval.
Motion by Mr. Barkis, second by Mrs. Slaughter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carried.
Same issue with professional learning and training experiences. We just hired two PLTW teachers. And their training for both of them, Amanda Munger and Tyler Cunningham, both of them will be at a conference from June 6th to 10th, which is obviously before our next board meeting. And also Amanda's second training will be from June 13th to 17th, Tyler from June 20th to 24th because of the timing of that, when those folks were hired and the timing of the training for PLTW. We'd recommend that we include those in professional learning and training activities.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Barkis, second by Mrs. Hathaway. Any discussion? There being none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Gifts, grants, donations, sponsorship. Sam DiPremio, Director of Secondary Education, requesting permission to accept a $5,000 grant through the IDOH in ACDH, Indiana Department of Health, Allen County Department of Health. And you have documents included. Also recommend the renewal of sponsorship agreements for OPS, Optimum Performance Sports, for $50,000 a year for Carroll High School, $4,000 per year for Maple Creek Middle and Carroll Middle to be administered through those athletic bonds. Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Barkis, second by Mrs. Slaughter. Any discussion?
On any of these, do we have any grants, do we have any reporting requirements back? Is there like scorekeeping or metrics we have to turn back in for either of the? Get them looking at the IDOH and the ACDH grant. Is there?
DOH, go ahead, Sam.
So the doctors I submitted were required to get the grant. There was a survey. It really wasn't a survey. It was a needs assessment. So at the end of the day, after being used, we used that money to supply our staff, our staff page. Did you do some career pieces in my after do this proposal? Governor Parker now was making sure that we had a disease response plan. So as we filled out, it's been 44 months over the pandemic. I think they're just wanting to make sure that we've got plans in place that can address some of these concerns.
Is there anything that is, when you said that last piece, that piqued an interest? And if it's in the attachments, I apologize, Sam, I did not see it. That we have to follow, anything that may or may not be supposedly defined by another organization or group?
Summers, I don't think so. I've asked us a question here. She's our nurse. She's kind of been there. All this information has to do with student health. She's got access. Ms. West, I don't believe that there's anything going back to them other than the needs assessment of things that we're going to need to do and just kind of looking at their resources.
The additional step beyond the the additional, additional step beyond the needs assessment is just communicable disease response plan and writing. It's something that has been done just informally in years prior. And I think back to 2009 with the H1N1. So I started working with the district in 2007. And so many of you can remember back to pandemic response planning has been going on for many years prior to COVID. So just the, in fact, just as proof, I brought the Communicable Disease Reference Guide for Schools 2017. So for example, if there's a meningitis case and Fort Wayne Community Schools did experience that, how, let's say, for example, I was away and an administrator needed to pick up a binder and be able to do the step-by-step, what do we do first, what do we do second? Do we have templates for letters to communicate with parents that are concerned and want to know, is my child affected? How do we know who's going to be contacted and so forth? So it's really making it more accessible for other people to see what the plan will be. And that was their goal, is to just make it more accessible for administrators. They can pick up the binder, for example, and say, okay, first up, let's call the board of health. A doctor just phoned in and said, we have a case of meningitis. Then how do we know, you know, who to contact? Well, you know, we need to get a roster or we need to find out, you know, who that person sat next to on the bus and so forth. So that we have just all the steps laid out, which many we've done. We've learned a lot, you know, through this current pandemic. So all the things that we've learned and hear and see that, all of that, you know, can go into the second piece, which is more of a written response plan. So it's much
More operational, so it's more operational in the sense.
Measles, monkey pox is in the news, so smallpox, what if we had a smallpox? That's like, I apologize, this is my daughter.
But general question is, this is more of sharing that we have operational plans, not so much, you must do X, Y, Z. That's all I, that's really the point I was asking. Okay. Operational plans for administration, everybody else, it's just not restricted here.
The OPS agreement bill, was that the similar as last time? Are there any changes?
A little, very similar as far as the sponsorship goes, significantly more dollars for Carroll High School.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose? Motion carried. Superintendent's report with Dr. Yeager. Want me to hit the lights?
That'd be good.
Couple of weeks ago, we talked about a draft. All we have to do is 17-day window for a member for higher mission lieutenant. This is our challenge that we're going to follow. This is what we have communicated on Tuesday, 17th, we release the name of the marker as a potential superintendent candidate on Wednesday. Contract was published in the newspaper. 23rd, tonight, this board meeting. On the 31st, Tuesday of next week, we will hold a public meeting. Purpose of that meeting is to take audience comments during the time frame. Then on the 7th, this public meeting to conduct a vote on, a board vote on the superintendent contract. Remember, we talked about 17 days. We are exceeding those 17 days and that's certainly able. And sometimes advisory, advise them to do that. On 19th is our day one. 18th was publishing contracts as day zero. 19th is day one. And we actually have a public meeting, which has to be no sooner than day 10, that's day 13. And the public meeting to conduct a vote on the superintendent's contract is on day 20, which could be no sooner than day 17. Obviously, day 10 and 17 fell on weekend and then of course, having a mortal day on the 30th caused us to push the receiving public input or comment on the contract. So I want to make sure that, two weeks ago, it was a draft. This is it. This is what we're following. And this is what the board will be conducting these meetings on these dates at this time. They are 6:00, the 30th is set at 6:00.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, thank you, Steve. You know, I think it's fair to say that the board identified the person that we felt Northwest Allen County Schools' needs for its next superintendent. And we made entry. Thanks to this guy, he has a relationship with him. And I think, you know, assuming that the board approves the contract, I'm just certain that Northwest Allen County Schools is going to be pleased with the selection. So that's all I can say at this time on that. But we'll move into next item, Dr. Yeager. 2022, 23, curricular materials adoption, two weeks ago. And I said we would approve all of the math recommendations, with the exception of the pre-calc book. And then we would bring it back in two weeks, so that's where we are. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the pre-calculus math textbook? Okay, motion by Mrs. Slaughter, second by Mrs. Hathaway, any discussion? Anybody have comments? Now, there being none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I didn't
Sure, okay. Okay, the, are you in favor, voting in favor, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, okay, the textbooks are, the math textbook is adopted, four to zero, with Mr. Summers abstaining. That concludes my report. Okay, thank you. We'll move into the business report with Mr. Mallers.
Thank you, Mr. Felger. First item I have is the Union Chapel Road Trail right-of-way acquisition. And the Trails Department and Allen County first approached us probably about three years ago in design work that they were going to propose in connecting the Puffer Belly Trail, which runs north-south, which is on the west side of Corbin Road, and connect that to the Parkview Campus. And we've actually seen some trail work along that stretch, along Union Chapel, and they approached us and they have proposed in their, and they're doing, have completed their design work for the trail going along the north side of Union Chapel, which would be along Northwest Allen's property. So in doing that, what they are, have proposed to you, to you is an acquisition of 30 feet of right-of-way along that, that property line. And we do have actually two parcels, it happens to be split into two parcels. The east parcel and the west parcel, and I'm going to say the east is kind of the vacant lot, if you can picture, and the west parcel is where Maple Creek stands. So the Allen County does, whenever they acquire right-of-way, they do appraisals. And they did appraisals for that property, and they proposed purchasing of that right-of-way for the east parcel for $23,045, and the west parcel for $40,725. They met with us early May, the proposal's a 30-day proposal for you. And with that said, the documents were in your, in your packet for review, which includes warranty deed and so on. And if it is approved, the purchase of the, of the right-of-way, they can or are willing to just take the board minutes of your approval and allow then the board president to execute the documents based on that, on that approval moving forward. So with that said, we, yeah, in front of you, recommendation then for the acquisition of those two right-of-way parcels, of those parcels.
Okay, bring it to the table for discussion. The chair would entertain a motion and a second to approve. We have a motion to approve.
We get to discuss this alone?
We do. I think technically you got to have a motion and a second to bring it to the table, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Mrs. Slaughter, second by Mrs. Hathaway. Okay, now we can talk about.
I guess the only concern I would have is just safety for our kids. I mean, there's a lot of times I drive by and there's teams, track, football, what have you, out in those areas.
Yeah, I mean, I know that can be really congested.
We've tried to choose lots for future schools, we've had to be real careful as far as how close they are to certain roads or certain highways to protect our kids. So I don't, I just, I don't know if that's, because technically a parent could say, well, I'm not on school property, when maybe they have, they're not supposed to, in an agreement because of a court system, where they're not allowed to be.
Oh, I see, it's kind of a safety issue with
Safety concern, anyway.
Public using the trails as well.
And in dress, Egress to Maple Creek is very, very busy, at least twice a day and multiple times more with athletic events and things like that. And so we'd have to have some sort of way to prevent tragic accidents, what's happened over off Carroll Road, where we have parents coming in and they do, I mean, because of the traffic flow there, they're quick turns, there's a lot of people pulling out fast and pulling in fast, and understood, a lot of traffic. And we really hate jogger, bicyclist, anybody to be injured along that way. And that's probably one of my biggest concerns. I think the second one, I think, Bill, you answered already, was with respect to who has to maintain this space. Because I know our, our studio staff, our mo, they're incredibly impeccable at keeping our facilities looking great. And as I understand this, this would be the responsibility of the county to maintain that. So again, that's the front part going into our Maple, to our school system. So, you know, as long as they can keep up maintenance and things like that. So there's no snow removal, so if anybody gets injured, it's not our fault. It's not our property. If we sell this off, it's not our property. But it is still a safety concern, I think, from the long run. So that's just, because the swale, it goes north of the swale, it's not south of the swale.
I share your concerns.
As far as maintenance go, you know, certainly we'll maintain around those, we're responsible for maintaining the ditch, that's part of our agreement with the surveyor's office, so that would be on that side. So, yeah, correct. And so, you know, similar to Carroll High School, we have sidewalks and trail both Buffle Road and Carroll Road, we certainly maintain that area and make it look nice and so on. Yeah, there is no mandated responsibility to keep it clear from snow, or any of that is not, is not required of us. I agree, the question of the entrance and exit of Maple Creek, I think, you know, if I would suggest, I would, I would say, you know, myself along with the staff at Maple Creek and Mr. Bidding, we sit down with the county, the Trails people, and figure out, how are you going to mark this? How are you going to set up the markings to, to make sure it's a controlled, you know, crossing kind of deal? I don't think that's going to fall into our ability to make the final decision, it's going to fall on them to make the final decision on how it's marked. But they, I think would be very willing to work with us and maybe even do some observations at times, it's busy, and maybe come up with the best way to mark that crossing.
I'm all in favor for having trails. I mean, it's great for, to be able to use those. I just think if we had a little bit more time to talk about some of these finer points.
The one thing is, the offer does expire in 30 days, so it would, it would expire before the next board meeting. But I, and the way it's worded is, they come back and say, if that appraised value isn't acceptable, you're to come back and say, well, why isn't it? Or, you know, you can contest why that's not. If, if, if you would choose to table it or whatever, I would simply go back to them and say, you know, it really wasn't a rejection of the values, it was just some further questions and see where they go. You know, maybe they just turn around and say that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what happens if we just say no. I mean, I'm not an expert in that, but I didn't think that eminent domain municipality could use it against another municipality.
And I read it, Ron, at least, the terms here basically said they would condemn the space and then mistake it with one in account. It says, it's written very strong in favor of the county.
Yeah, yeah.
But the point would be is, you know, I trust your execution on it, Ron, so if we can get those answers, I mean, I would, I guess I'd argue I'd approve it conditionally on the, you getting some answers, I don't know if that's work or not.
I'd rather have the whole board give me the thumbs up, you know.
Can you say no, though?
You know, approve it, you know, contingent upon, you know, you know, safety measures acceptable to the board or something.
I could take them back.
Okay.
I honestly, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't either. I really don't either, but I think I read that somewhere. I don't, I don't think a municipality could use eminent domain against other municipalities. But I, I mean, I've been wrong before, so.
Certainly their documents, it appears that that would be their next course of action. But that's probably a little over my head as far as the legal, you know. Coursework.
Mr. Mallers, do you have any concerns with working with them to find a solution?
You know, we've, we've always had an excellent relationship with the county highway department and, and the people at the Trails, they've been great. They've, they've been in communication with us, like I said, for three years on this and moving forward. So I don't have a problem with them being receptive to working with us. I just would be surprised. I'd be real surprised. I will tell you, the engineering firm that's doing it is ANZ Engineering, they do a lot of the county road design, and actually they did our traffic study at Carroll High School, if you remember, when we did that. So we've got some past relationship with them as well. I think they'd be open to talking to us as well.
Do you know where this goes after it hits Coldwater? Does it continue east or does it go north?
It continues east along Union Chapel, and, and it connects, what they told me is it will have a connection all the way into the Parkview Campus. So at some point in time, it crosses to the south side of Union Chapel. I think Mrs. Hathaway thought it was actually on the east side of Old Auburn or
that Chapel Creek neighborhood, right before the roundabout.
So it's on the west side of the roundabout.
Or this east entrance into the suburb. Wasn't sure if they could utilize our nature, center of woods versus coming right in front of our school. Well, if they were going to be going north, I thought.
And when they go through, do they reseed and grade all of this, the area that they?
Yeah.
It sounds to me like the prudent thing to do would be to table.
Yeah, I'm not complaining about the price, I'm just really
No, I'm not complaining.
I just want to make sure that there is a plan to prevent injuries there, because regardless of its trail property, it looks like it's next property. It'll look like next property.
Could we approve it with the understanding that they would need to have acceptable safety measures in place? Is that more beneficial?
Sounds to me like we'd need to bring it back to the board to make sure they're acceptable.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. I just thought if we table it, that expires.
I think it'll expire. I'm just, in, in response to your question, I'm not sure we're the ones that are going to be in control of their safety design, because it's going to be in their right-of-way and their design. But I certainly think they would be open to presenting, you know, what their, what their design would be, and open to what our suggestions would be on that.
Make an amendment to the purchase agreement to extend the dead one.
I think if we table it, maybe we'd just go back and make that suggestion that, that we're
Just to tell, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I see you right there. Is this, is this a concern, from your perspective? I mean, you, you're there every day, so that's the reason I ask.
I have some concerns about the traffic, but it also could benefit having some kind of sidewalk there, right now we don't have anything.
Look that other side.
And Bill, like, this came up like four years ago.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
And at the time, we kind of landed on it might be better to have it cross our drive a little further north. Instead of down by, right by the intersection where it's so wide, that would give people passing a chance to see who's coming, as opposed to people swinging that drive really quickly, and it'd be a narrow, narrower section of road to cross. So I think there's a bright way to do it, that'd be more safe, but I think all in all, it's a good thing, but I don't, certainly don't want somebody hit out there either, so.
A lot of cars go through there every day.
And we did talk to them about that a little bit, on the location of that cross. And then they came back and I noticed they did put it to the south, which I guess their engineers made that decision on where they wanted to make the cross, you know, so, but they, you know, we could certainly bring it back to them and have that discussion again with them, you know.
Seems to me that sounds like the logical thing to do, there's just a lot of questions and safety, so.
Do we motion to table? Or we're getting out of by rejecting, right?
I think, yeah, we're not rejecting, I think, but, but it sounds to me like the prudent thing to do would be to table it for more information.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this until we gain more information regarding the safety concerns, with the expectation that, looking for an extension on the offer, price is not the issue, it's more of a safety thing.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Summers, second by Mrs. Hathaway to table the discussion for further clarification, primarily dealing with safety issues, not price. Any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to table, say aye. Any opposed? That discussion is tabled.
Next, next item I have is incorporation purchases. And the total I'm recommending is $117,022, itemized out, there are just two items here. A fire system upgrade panel at Cedar Canyon, this was part of our capital projects budget that we passed last fall, and is in the 2022 budget. That total is $55,600, we did get three quotes for that one, recommending below for that one with Premier Communications. Also recommending a change order with Wolf Roofing, Commercial Roofing, they got the bid for the Maple Creek project. And I think I mentioned in memorandum that, not surprising, the roofing industry is quite challenging in the supply chain, and they did run an issue with some of the spec materials from our architect, and they have proposed an alternate way to get this done and meet the specifications. And I would certainly, I'm not recommending that we go below the specifications. And this would require a change order of $61,422. And like I said, that the total is $117,022, and I recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Barkus, second by Mr. Summers, any discussion?
Bill, I don't get pulled up. What was the, roughly speaking, what was the original roof they built? Roughly, roughly.
It was, it was right around $600,000, I'm going to say.
10% increase. I just wanted to put it in.
Without having that number in front of me, it was right around that.
Will we be able to do phase two on that roof?
Yeah, we still have about, it's just slightly below $900,000 in our 2022, our 2021 GEO bond. And if you recall, when we actually did the budget hearing for that, we marked it at both phase two and phase three, because we're doing a third, a third, and a third each summer. I don't think with the way today's prices are, that we'll get both two and three phases done with that budget. And I think what we'll do is put that in our plan for our 2022 GEO bond, for us to consider here over the next few months. So, but there, but there still is significant to hit at least phase two.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Corporation purchases are approved.
That concludes the business report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mallers. Claims and payroll, do we have a motion to approve claims and payroll subject to audit? Motion by Mr. Barkus, second by Mrs. Slaughter, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Claims and payroll are approved. Board comments, do any board members have comments to make this evening?
I just wanted to like to congratulate our students and staff who participated in the visual, visual arts showcase last week at Carroll High School. Our students' talents and the pieces that were shared were absolutely remarkable. I'd also like to congratulate Carroll Middle School on their incredible production of Annie, and thank the CMSPTO for all their support in helping that opportunity be available to their students. And then I just want to encourage our students and staff and parents to finish the school year strong. It's a busy time of year and hard, but just want to encourage everybody to finish strong, and then wish our very best to our graduating class of 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to say congratulations to Relay for Life. As of the last count, they've raised over $135,000, and more is coming in, so that's amazing. And thank you to all who attended Dr. Shaminoff and Lisa Harris's retirement party last night.
Okay, superintendent. Okay, superintendent comments?
Uh just a few, some more fine arts recognitions, uh both to Carol High School and Maple Creek Middle School bands. Recognized as recipients of the Indiana State School Music Association All Music Award for twenty-one, twenty-two, both of those bands. I'm gonna take a minute. We we've been working with and struggling with and competing with the technology issues in this room and we're getting better. I wanna thank Lizette, I wanna thank Seth and all the tech people. Because after we have these meetings, we meet the next day and say, okay, what went right, what went wrong? Why can't we do this? Let's fix that. But thank you to the U two and and the tech department, so uh good work. It's been a few months, but we're uh we're getting around to it and Uh also to the uh young artists out here this this evening, uh had a great evening. It's one of my favorite nights is uh having the artists and their teachers and their parents come out and display their art. What talented people and uh we talked about the high school uh art night and you can see why it's so great there because we have great artists that are feeding into the program, great teachers um in that program. Uh congratulations to the Carol High School girls and boys track teams, both won their sectionals. Senior Awards was, I think, the seventeenth. That was a a great night as well. Recognizing all those students who deserve some acknowledgement for all their hard work uh through their many years of education. We're going to say we're very happy for Gabriella Holman. Why is that? Gabriella is a an art, a teacher at Maple Creek Middle School and just successfully completed her doctor's dead uh kidney transplant. And she's doing very, very well, so we're happy uh for Gabriella. And reminder, Carol High School graduation, June fifth, three o'clock, Coliseum. Looking forward to seeing you there.
We'll be there. Okay, I guess that concludes our meeting tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Barkus to adjourn, second by Mrs. Hathaway. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. The meeting is adjourned.